No, it's a unicorn hat.
Reporting has started.
It's a unicorn hat.
We will now bring the November 22nd council meeting to order. For the record, I would like to note that Mayor McCullough is not in attendance tonight. And due to work, Deputy Mayor Carter is not available to chair. Therefore, council needs to please vote for a replacement chair. Are there any volunteers or nominations?
I make a motion to have Kelsman Justin Evans.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Councilmember Evans.
All right, thank you, everybody. We will start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, Madam.
Be a unicorn.
Deputy Mayor Carter? Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Here, sorry.
Councilmember McLehman?
Here.
Councilmember Swatman?
Present.
And Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody. Um, I'm looking over the mayor's notes here. Do we, is the revised AB 22156 that is for this week's? Okay, okay. Uh, so we do have an agenda modification, uh, and that is a revised version of AB 22156, which has been provided to the council on and is also on the back table. Um, there are no announcements, appointments, or presentations, so we will move into item two, public hearings. There are no public hearings, so now we'll go into citizens' comments. This is your time to address the council on city business. You have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we will conclude that. Uh, we have no correspondence. Uh, next is committee reports. Uh, Finance Committee met tonight. Uh, Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Carter was there, but he's not in attendance tonight, so I'll give the report on that. Um, we had a personnel update from Human Resource Manager, uh, Brian Sandler. We had Resolution 3107, an agreement for indigent, indigent, uh, defense services with the Law Office of Michael Harberson. Uh, that was moved forward to the, uh, 13th of December consent agenda, as well as AB 165, Resolution 3105, authorizing a professional service agreement with Cabot Down Associates for a compensation study. That too was moved to the consent agenda. We had an approval of minutes and no open discussion. Uh, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, uh, Chairman. So, uh, Community Development Committee met, uh, last time. Uh, items of business included the authorization for both, uh, services for engineering and, uh, the inspection services. Those are on this evening's agenda, so I suspect we'll end up talking about those some more, so I won't talk about them now. We spend all the time talking at the committee level about those. The committee is very concerned about those items and also the outfitting, uh, of the resolution to outfit the Public Works, the new Public Works facility with the needed tools and such for different activities out there. Those were our items of business that evening.
Uh, thank you very much, Councilmember Swatman. Public Safety Meeting will be meeting on the 13th of December, and that is at 3:30 upstairs on the second floor. Um, on other reports, I don't have any other reports, but I did want to make a motion to excuse Deputy Mayor Carter and the mayor for tonight if I could get a second on that. Second. All right, any discussion?
Can we excuse the mayor? Just technical, I don't think we actually excused the mayor. But whatever.
Okay, all right.
It's fine.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Any abstentions? All right, moving on to the consent agenda, motion to approve?
So moved.
I had a question about that, uh, however we do that nowadays, because I need some items removed off of there.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know how we do that and what.
Um, which items would you like removed off the consent agenda?
Uh, the ordinance D 22130, the annual, biannual budget. Uh, also the, is it one on there for the?
Uh, 130 or 139?
139.
Okay, 139, correct?
Okay.
Um, also. Okay, no, that's the main one that I was concerned about.
You were thinking 156 was on there twice?
Yeah, right.
All right, uh, we will move item D on the consent agenda, AB 22139, ordinance D 22139, two, uh, full council issues. Now, item 12. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified? So moved. All right, seconded. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, consent passes. We have no Finance Committee issue.
Uh, Chairman Evans?
Yes.
You guys have lost your sound like we did last week.
Oh, okay.
That's better, thank you.
Okay. All right, no, no public safety issues. We'll go on to full council issues. Uh, item A, B 22156, ordinance D 22156, lady?
This is ordinance D 22156. The council motion would be to amend ordinance numbers 1659 and 1668 relating to salaries and benefits for nonrepresented employees.
I'll move. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Uh, Councilmember Swatman?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I had a question about this. Of course, this is a revised one, right? So the, the administration is rightly, uh, suggested for a greater one.
Yes, yes, that's correct. After the comments that were made at the Finance Committee meeting and then comments that were made at last, uh, week's workshop, I got together with the mayor. The initial proposal coming out of the administration was for a 1.5% cost of living adjusted, uh, adjustment for nonrepresented employees. We've now, uh, increased that to 2.75%. So that's the proposal that's before you.
Great, appreciate that. Um, I'm still wondering from the council's perspective, you know, this is, uh, the mayor's proposal for that particular, um, amount. I appreciate him coming up with, um, a better, you know, moving towards what I would think meeting the cost of living. That's what I'm worried about, right? Um, is maintaining the buying power of the people that we employ, uh, because of the cost of living. It's extraordinary that we're going through. It's not like it's going to go back down, is my understanding. And I'm not an economist, never been in a situation before, so I'm kind of scratching my head on what do we do? Because, you know, clearly federal government thinks the, the cost of living is like 8.7%. They're using that figure to go for the, uh, cost of living for Social Security and such. Um, and something closer to that would seem to be what I think we would have to go with, or I would like to go with, to compensate our employees for raises, uh, for the COLA, right? So they still have, if people don't know, they still have that step increase if that applies to them, right? They can still get that. Um, but the actual, you know, raising everyone's buying power, the COLA kind of thing, because when they go to the stores and such, they can't purchase what they could before. Um, we, and as pointed out by other council members, of course, we have the salary study that we'll be doing, but that's just the bookends to the position, right? That's the market, whatever it is, administrator, clerk, whatever the position is. So we figure that out, but so, and I'm looking for input, right? I don't understand why we wouldn't be going with a, a larger raise, because I, I don't know what the explanation is not to, because if you're going to say you're trying to meet COLA, that's what you're trying to do, is you're trying to meet the cost of living. How do you get away with saying, well, we're just going to go with 2.5, when all the data that I'm looking at says like eight plus percent, you know, is the actual cost of living? So that's my spiel. I'm looking for input on that.
Was, uh, Councilmember McLehman's?
Yeah, so, um, there have been a few organized, uh, labor agreements that have factored in the inflation into the market, and some people believe that's a sign that, um, things will, uh, that the economy will not, uh, adjust anytime too soon, because once the labor market starts to adjust for the inflation rate, um, it will make its way through most of the, but I do think it's prudent to do that, but because this is not a contractual issue, this is something that council can do. Is it, you know, it, this would be different if we were negotiating a contract right now.
Sure.
As opposed to, um, the nonrepresented, you know, we can make the adjustment now, and then if it really is a, a problem, we can make it later, make it bigger later, or if we make it, we make a huge jump now, is that going to, um, wind up meaning that there will be no adjustments for a long time in the future? So it's, it's kind of a, um, you know, we're making adjustment, it, it's in, it's in step with the other adjustments this year, so it's not out of bounds with the rest of the city staff. Do we, do we want to go out of bounds because we can, and then we have to wait, or do we want to just wait until, um, we negotiate the contracts again?
My thought process on that would be then, then we've got to overcorrect again on the contract, on the negotiated ones next time around, and then we're just constantly ping ponging back and forth rather than staying consistent and moderate.
Right, yeah, I agree completely, but I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we say it's a cost of living increase, and unless somebody's going to look at some other index and say, well, that's not what the cost of living actually is, you know, right?
Is it to keep up ahead of the cost of living or to help offset some? I don't know.
And that's what I'm thinking.
Where that margin is.
I, I thought it was to say that, you know, again, that there, that the wage that the employee is being paid meets is, is basically level, right? So that they're not losing out, they're not getting a pay decrease, because that's what we pay the people for, right? You pay somebody so they can go buy stuff, and if the stuff is a lot more expensive, then they can't buy as much stuff, so they've actually got a pay decrease. And.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get it.
Because you're not doing it arbitrarily, right? You're, you're tagging it to a, a figure. You're not pulling it out of the air. You're saying, oh, the cost of living, and they take it, you can look at the charts, they take all these goods and services and they, you know, do all the percentage of, the bread goes up this, and gas goes up this, and da, 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 da. All this, it's a big basket. They come up with that average, and they, and that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. It's not arbitrary. We're tagging it, we're saying, we're doing this raise because of this. And we've done that for years and years and years and years. We usually, a lot of times, maybe are a little bit below it, but it's still, you know, it's tagged, it's, it's stuck there. It's not something I'm picking for a COLA, right? The raise is that step thing that the employee is eligible for, and that's up to the mayor to work out in the administration with that. But to actually keep their wage normal, you have to do a, a COLA, right? Or, I don't know, you know, because I'm not picking it out, right?
Question at hand, right? Is the cost of living adjustment to offset back to zero, or is it to minimize the overall impact on inflation?
It's sort of try to get them even, right? Because we know inflation has been like eight point, or closer to nine almost in reality. So that's what inflation has been. So, and again, it's all new to me, right? I'm not an expert, so, uh, because my experience is that other companies have had to go back and actually give their employees bonuses, so that's in reference to like the union, because when the union folks will recognize that in their contract, and they'll come back too, and they'll say, hey, wait a minute, you know, that you're given, uh, whatever, a 5% of 4, or 3, or whatever you're giving to these guys, you know, we want at least that, which they don't have currently because they're stuck in their contract. So you probably end up with some kind of a spot bonus with those folks and the cost of living increase to get them back to normal. But, you know, I'm, I'm like, obviously way out of my expertise when, you know, it comes to, in understanding how the economics works of that, I just, and many of the companies out there, you know, if you're going to run a corporation, you have to pay your employees, you have to pay them a fair wage. That's one of the tenets of doing that. You know, they do, uh, work for us, and we have to pay them a fair wage. So how can you say, again, I'm not, you know, I'm just, how can you say, oh, we're going to give you 2.5, 2.7, when, well, what is that? That, that's not even close to inflation.
But it's pretty commensurate with what our negotiated contracts.
Right, exactly. But of course, they negotiated that, and I would encourage those folks to, you know, come to us through that process, and, you know, they, they have to go through their union process to figure out what we can do with that, because that's a legal union process. We're not able to just, you know, arbitrarily jump into that, right? But I think that, obviously, that needs to be adjusted too.
Are you, are you looking to make a motion tonight, or looking for just information, or what, what is?
That's, I don't know, from somebody, I was hoping somebody was like, oh, this is like an expert at this, because I've been.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yeah, I, I feel like what you're basically trying to say is you do feel like this number is arbitrary in that it was, you're trying to figure out how this number was, was even created and how it was decided.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's a great question.
Is there any basis for this, John?
Well, it's split the difference between the, the negotiated contracts. You know, as is pointed out in the Agenda Bill, all four of our bargaining units have contracts that are settled through 2023. Uh, APSME is 2.5% for, uh, 2023, and then the three police unions are at 3%. And so it's splitting the difference.
Yep.
I mean, as far as fair goes, I think that falls in line with that. Now, where equal is, might be a question, but.
Yeah, exactly. Aren't you going to play the ping pong game again when we go over to the union? Because the union's going to recognize that that inflation rate is 8. some odd percent, you know, and, and they're, they're going to be, you know, rightfully so, going after that 8. some odd percent. Right? Tom?
Well, I'd go, I likely have some type of justification what we should have. I'd like to just pass this tonight, and come the first year, if we have some more details from Brian, possibly give some more insight what we really should be doing, instead of just take, you know, we have our hat. I agree, they deserve to get what the current inflation is, what it deserved to pay them the right amount. But right now, we're all just grasping straws, so.
Yeah.
I agree with you, but I'd like to just pass this tonight, and then come first year, discuss this in more detail.
Yeah, if we can include that in part of it, that would make sense to get the experts, you know, to tell us what we need to be doing.
That's what we need, yeah.
Because it's definitely moving in the right direction, you know? I'm, I'm thinking that they plainly need a 8% raise, you know, that's, that's my pretty contention, so. But again, we have a good proposal.
You got one online.
Oh, I can't see.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, so I'm, because it looks like the mayor's got it down to 1.5% here, yeah, for the COLA, for nonrepresentative, but why can't we just do what the, what the union has got for their regular, um, represented employees at 2.5 for now, instead of 1, 1.5? Why do we have to split the difference just because it wasn't negotiated by the union, or?
That, what was currently proposed, which I believe was sent out, um, does include that. Uh, Councilmember Fullerton, what you're looking at in your agenda packet is a, uh, bold revision. It is at 2.5% right now.
Yeah, 0.7.
0.7, yeah.
5.
7.5.
Okay, so I didn't get the updated version with my packet?
You have to show up in person to get the real stuff.
I am in person, but they changed it. Well, I, I'm not really technically, I guess I'm not in person, but I picked up my packet before I left, so, okay. All right, well, then I'm going to shut my mouth.
No, it's good.
0.75.
We do have a motion and a second that is pending right now.
Can we ha, can we schedule, um, uh, on the first available meeting next year to get some more input? Because I'd like to see more input on getting that adjusted up.
Uh, one of the things that we did in Finance Committee tonight was move forward to the 13th, the, um, salary review. Would that be something that we could tag on to that as a?
Certainly.
As a, as a.
And again, since this is not subject to collective bargaining, you know, council can make an adjustment of any time they see fit.
Yeah, but it's only forward looking too, so, you know.
Yeah, you can't do retro.
Yeah.
I think having them take a look at that would be prudent, so we could see what their analysis would show.
Definitely, yeah.
With a potential pop-up, uh, midterm year or something. All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Oh, Sherry's the question.
Oh, Sherry?
Uh, two things. Your sound is going in and out, and I saw Brian online. I wasn't sure if he had the CPI data for you tonight or not.
What?
That, that sounds better.
Yeah, if, I know we've, we've fought long and hard not to tie something to a CPI, so I'd rather not introduce that as a, as a, as a point at this time, but anyone wish to have that presented?
It's just a number, right? But again, I agree with you, you know, we're, we're talking about inflation rate. I don't know how that, if that was to relate. All right. Is it just a number? Does Brian have a number on that?
No, I, I don't have a, any CPI number, um, available. I just was showing my face just to be available, but I agree that the, you know, the, as we discussed in the Finance Committee, that the salary will be, um, the salary compensation study will be, um, hopefully available by, around June of next year.
And we can tag them to take a look at the, uh, inflation and, and, uh.
COLA.
COLA, or nonrepresented?
Yeah, we can ask that. I mean, they're going to look at, uh, where we are with the, the market, as of, of course, with a lot of other, um, cities. And I know that we're talking about nonrepresentative, but a lot of the other, um, bargaining units have already settled, um, so we'll have all that information. But yeah, we can have CPI. CPI is, um, usually available June, July. Uh, there's also one in February.
I pulled it up. I have the CPI if you're interested. Um, the CPI for the first half of 2022 is 8.6, and CPI is the Consumer Price Index, so it's tied to a basket of goods. Um, October CPI was 9.4, August was 9.2, June was 9.5, started the year off at 8.1, so they're averaging for the half of the year is 8.6.
Are you able to go back to one year ago?
Uh, one year ago, yes. Um, first half was, for 2021, 3.3, and the second half was 6.2.
Yeah.
Sherry, which CPI are you looking at, just to make sure we're?
Uh, it's the one that the unions typically had used. The, um, I pulled it up from MRC, it's CPIW for Seattle Tacoma. The one that has always.
That's a common one to look at, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, years ago, we used to be Seattle Tacoma Bellevue.
Yeah, I know, right? Yeah.
Then we got tied in with, you know, Bellevue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we, okay, so we'll, we'll request that the, uh, consent agenda for two weeks from now, that the contract for the company looking at pay scale also looks at the CPI and, on that. And we do have a motion and a second on the table right now. So all in favor of approving, um, item A on your, uh, full council issue? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? All right, and any, uh, abstentions? All right, we'll move on to item B, uh, AB 22158, Resolution 3100. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 3100. The council motion would be to authorize the amendment to the agreement with Bruce Dees and Associates for services during construction for the Allen York Park Project Phase 1.
So moved. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Swatman?
Yeah, the, these two are tied together, so, um, and I don't know if, uh, Mr. Johnstone has any input on what the current situation is on this, because we had extensive, um, discussions at committee level, spent most of our time, and I don't think any of us were happy with where we're at, but we found that, um, I, at least I did, I know these are very necessary requirements, but Mr. Johnstone can probably fill us in on what the current status is, if possible.
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, yeah, so just by way of some background, obviously, we hire these consultants to provide services for us during construction. In this case in particular, Bruce Dees was the design engineer for the Ball Field project, so we keep them on board in order to be able to answer design-related questions and come up with solutions to design-related issues through construction. Uh, and then the next one, since they are kind of tied together, I'll go ahead and touch on that as well. Parametrics is, uh, taking care of our project management, inspection services, construction observation during construction. They've also been keeping, uh, they, they actually attended CDC and were able to present just some of their backup material that they're keeping. The project's been a little bit of a challenge, so having that documentation in place should the project get really sideways would be handy for the city as far as, uh, defense, if we needed to. I don't see that happening, but if we needed to go, you know, into some sort of litigation on the project. So these contracts are, are for their services. Uh, we did meet with the contractor, had a good meeting with them last Friday, and had another meeting today. Uh, the point of the meeting on Friday was just to get everybody together and talk about the difficulties we're having and how we can move this project forward to completion as quickly as possible. Um, we, as you know, this project has a grant through, uh, RCO affiliated with it, $350,000. That grant currently, uh, requires that the project be completed by the end of March 2023, and we are struggling right now. So we wanted to sit down with the contractor and let them know that we need them to come up with a plan to get us there successfully. We did propose to, uh, give the contractor 20 additional working days on the project, but no additional compensation. Uh, they, when we met with them today, they were putting together a revised construction schedule, uh, that would reflect those 20 additional working days. Um, and, uh, they got to make a few more tweaks, but they seem to be on board with what it is that we proposed. Um, and if that is the case, we would, uh, then process a change order for the project. No monetary value, it'd be 20 working days, and we'd move forward. That 20 working days would put us at approximately the end of February of 2023 for a project completion, which leaves us a few weeks to be able to close out the, the paperwork on the project, reach substantial completion, and satisfy the requirements of the grant. So that's where we're at right now.
So, and if the, maybe the public and the council, because some, most of the CDC is here, but, um, for, it's the council that's not there. Um, at the committee level meetings, the, these folks are basically our inspectors, right? Both, uh, the Dees is the design kind of authority on what's supposed to be putting out there, and, and then the parametrics folks are the ones that are actually doing the site level inspection, right? So how these projects go is they're, they go out there and they inspect, because they don't tell these folks how to do it, right? They're actually, you know, checking off to make sure they did it exactly correct, right? So we're doing these things underground and different things with the fields and drain fields and all this kind of stuff. So there's a book that this guy literally has, have all the pictures of all the underground work and all this stuff, and it's all documented when it was done, how it was done, all this type of stuff. So there are insurance folks, right? So we could literally, and we had the decision at, uh, committee level, you can tell these folks, you know, you can say no to this, you know? It's like, nope, we're not doing this. Um, they're going to still construct the park, and they're going to do it to whatever, you know, the, the standard they believe it is, but then we won't have any inspection services to make sure that we can go back later on, a year down the road, and when something's wrong, be able to kind of recover from that. So it's really important, it's not, you know, something that we're like choosing to, you know, want to add on there, but the contractors, as noted in the Agenda Bills, inefficiencies and issues that the contractor itself has had that is driving us to have to do this. So, um, you know, it's, it's a sticky wicket, uh, not, not a happy camper by any means, but, you know, it's other than, you could, there's a couple other paths you can go, and they're not pretty at all, right? You could obviously tell them, okay, we're done, stop, you know, you guys are out of here, we're going to start arguing in court about this. That's like, yeah, that was going to spend a lot of money and get you nowhere. Um, so you have to figure out a path forward. Mr. Johnstone and his crew's been able to find one in the weeds there to, in between the trees to get us out of this. Uh, these are, they're hard projects when you, these are very specialized, the labor market's incredibly hard, there's a lot of subcontractors involved. It's just, it's not an easy, easy thing out there right now, but, you know, for me, in my opinion, the, the inspection services are critical. Um, we need this for an insurance kind of thing, and the project's going to get done one way or the other, and I want to be able to have good insurance. The, the, I was very impressed by the parametrics individual. He's doing a really nice job. The, the, I was very impressed by the parametrics individual, he's doing a really nice job. You know, if you've ever dug into that, if you love projects, because you can tell I'm kind of a project guy, you know, you can look, look at this and just see amazing, you know, pictures, dates, the whole thing, and it's, it's really nice, because he's like, oh, well, you know, the drain field's too close to the wall, it's not over here, you know, they built the curbing wrong, all these kind of issues, and then they'll work with them if they designed something wrong or something, they put something on the ground wrong, then maybe there's a way that they can do kind of a workaround to still meet what they're trying to get at without having to rip everything out or something like that. So all kinds of nuance to construction activities. Mr. Evans done a lot of weird stuff in his life previously, right, with the different construction activities, so, you know, unfortunate we have to do this, but in my opinion, it's, it's a very small amount of insurance for a very technical project.
I see, Tom, did you have something? Councilmember McLemmons?
Okay.
Councilmember Watson?
From our discussion at CDC, we can see that the subcontractor's part of the problem to the contractor, wasn't watching what the subcontracts are doing, and that's what we have to, these two companies oversee what they're all doing together. So it takes a little detailed look every day, and the contractor should be reviewing what the subs are doing to solve the problems we're having, so we need to pay this bill and to make sure that thing is done right, with all we're putting into it.
All right. Councilmember McLemmons?
Yeah, so my intent was not to support this agenda bill at all. We were very clear when we voted to approve this, that, you know, this was a challenging project, and, but it needed to come in on time and within budget because it's using precious park dollars, and it's an opportunity to show that the, that we can, we can execute these sorts of projects in a, in a reasonable way. So the overages and the delays are concerning. I, I asked for the daily reports, and parametrics produced them, they were more than sufficient, they were well done and documented, and I concur with Councilman Swatman's analysis that, you know, it's thorough, and he does a good job, he represented him well. The problem I have with this is that the grant, this is one-third of the value of the grant, right? So we're spending, we're going to spend one-third of the value of grant in the, in the fact that the project's late, right? So, but I think now, after, during the meeting, you know, I was convinced that it would be foolhardy at, at best, and it would be irresponsible at worst to not have parametrics there while the project gets completed, and for some other serious problems go wrong, and not have that material available. So I've decided I will support this, but, you know, just want to go, you know, on record very clear that I, I really don't think we should enable the contractor at all, so I won't support any funding for the contractor, but I will for this consultant to make sure that things are done right.
All right, thanks very much. Councilmembers, Watson?
And I agree with you, and that was my first consideration in our meeting, that there's no reason why we should have to pay this, but the contractor's the problem, as you point out, he's responsible for it, and this is all done, said and done, we should go back to contract and get our monies back. We need these two companies here to make sure this job's done right and not done incorrectly, all the money we're spending into it. So this is the contractor's responsibility, we should pay it, we should make sure the contractor pays that, pays us back when we get done.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We have a mo, a motion and a second, so we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And any abstentions? All right, AB 22158, Resolution 3100 passes. We'll now go on to item C, AB 22159, Resolution 3101. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 3101, the council motion would be to authorize an amendment to the agreement with parametrics for project management and inspection services during construction for the Allen York Park Project Phase One.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, I got a move in second. Any discussion on this beyond what we did on the previous? All right, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. All right, any abstentions? All right, thank you. The motion passes, and we will now move on to new item D on full council agenda, AB 22139, Ordinance D 22139. Madam Clerk?
For Ordinance D 22139, the council motion would be to adopt the biennial budget for the calendar years 2023 and 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, I got a move in second. Discussion, Councilmember Swatman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering, you know, if it's possible if we could move this to the workshop because of the lack of council members and mayor being present, if it's a little bit of a discussion, you know, the staff did a really good job of doing the presentation from the mayor's budget, now it's kind of in the council's area, and I, and I had several different questions, and kind of some nuanced policy questions that probably, you know, would be germane for the mayor's input, but I don't know where everybody's at on the budget, if they're all just happy campers, and it's kind of a non-issue, so.
Are you making a motion to move this to the December 6th workshop?
Well, I don't know if, if there's enough support, and I wouldn't want to, you know...
Sherry, is there any issue with that? No?
Uh, December 6th, you said?
Yeah, the first workshop of the month?
No, but I haven't had anybody reach out to me either, so I know we've had, I think, six meetings on the budget, so I'd be interested in communication from folks if there's issues.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's a technical issues as much as just kind of some policy questions around some of the stuff, right? In, in my mind, and some of the newer council members might want to drill into some more of the details on it, but, you know, now that it's clearly in the council's realm of deciding on, you know, what they want to do with the full budget, it'd be interesting to get all the new members to, you know, have a good debate about the budget flows.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, I would like to have more of a discussion on the comprehensive study as well, but I had a few questions on that, so I would, I would support moving to the workshop.
All right, so do I have a motion to?
You have a motion and a second then?
Motion and a second. So this would be to move.
22-139.
AB 22139 to the workshop on December 6th. Would there be action and discussion at that workshop? Anyone have any opposition to taking action on a workshop at that time?
That'd be good.
Is, I was just trying to look at the, the calendar, is there a council meeting after that workshop?
Yes, December 3rd. There is, yeah.
Yeah, I would prefer not to especially pass a budget during a workshop, I'd rather do that in the council.
Sherry, would passing that on the 13th pose any issues?
Um, no, unless it's not passed, obviously, the last meeting of the year, and if it doesn't pass on the 13th, then we would have to get in a situation that we've seen the federal government get into. There would be no ability to pay for anything passed.
All right, we, we have a motion and a second to move this agenda bill to a discussion only on the 6th of December and action on the 13th of December at our workshop, or at our, at our council meeting.
Very good.
Any discussion on that motion, second? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes as discussed. There is no executive session or no close session, so this meeting is adjourned. Happy holidays and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Gwendolyn.
Thank you, you too, Justin.
Richard West.